Eternal Father, I thank you for your goodness and your mercy. I thank you for your love and your compassion. I thank you that your word that is true. I thank you for your peace and your love. And Father God, we just ask that you would be in our midst. We thank you that you are the Prince of Peace. So we welcome your peace into this meeting. And Father, we ask that you will bless everyone that is participating in this meeting and that all the business of the city will be taken care of in decency and order. Father God, we ask for your blessing in Jesus' name. We pray amen and amen. Counselor Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Here.
Councilman Hairston? I don't see him. I'll come back. Councilwoman?
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Councilman Herring?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson? Councilwoman Ferguson, can you hear us? Councilman Hairston has joined us. Councilman Ferguson is here. And Council President Curtis will be joining us shortly. You have a quorum, Councilwoman.
Okay, I couldn't hear anything.
Oh.
Did y'all hear me?
We can hear you.
And you did? Oh, I couldn't hear anything. Okay. So it's... The President available now?
No, he said he would try within a half an hour to join us.
Okay, okay. So, um... Did y'all hear the invitation?
Yes, we did.
I couldn't hear anything back. So you did the roll call, so we have a quorum. So...
Yes.
I'll call to set the agenda.
To move.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Councilman Herring?
Yeah, there's a resolution right here for... A resolution of no confidence in the mayor of Glanard. I ask that that be taken off the agenda and discussed Saturday evening.
So noted. Is there any objection? Okay.
I'm sorry, Council Vice President. I'm wondering why? Why would we want to remove that from the agenda?
Um, you're asking me or?
I'm asking, I guess, Council President, I mean Councilman Herring, because he's the one that requested it be removed. If, you know, to give a little background as to why.
Yeah, okay. I agree with it also. But Councilman Herring, if you want to...
Yes, I just feel that this is something that should have been, should be discussed amongst the council first since this is a major undertaking. So I think it's some things that need to be tightened up on it. So I think we need to discuss it first.
All right, Councilman Herring, thank you. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Right.
Say your unanimous, want to take a vote on that? Vote for... Does everyone agree? Okay. A vote on the agenda with the change.
You want to vote, voice count?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Councilman Fareed?
No, because we're in the work session. So I think that's the purpose for us to discuss if, um, yeah.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
I'm fine with us discussing.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Yes to discuss or yes to remove?
To remove.
Councilman Herring?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a care of. So this is a vote to remove it?
Yes.
Yes, to remove so there can be further discussion.
Yes, I vote yes to remove it.
Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, no, because this is a work session and unless it's considered as a personnel item, I don't see any reason why we can't discuss it today and get it. If this is where the direction of the council is going in, we need to go ahead and go forward. Thank you.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, remove. For further discussion.
So I have just a point of clarification. If we have a further discussion as a council, isn't that another meeting?
We can have it as an executive meeting or a closed meeting.
So are we saying that we want to take this into a closed meeting today? Or do we, are we saying we want to move it to a whole nother time? Because we can't, we, the council cannot meet and discuss this and it not be a meeting?
Yes, we can.
Are you saying that four, more than four council members can meet and discuss this and it not be considered a meeting?
We can have a closed meeting or executive meeting.
Right, that's what I'm asking for clarification now. Are we saying to remove it? Or are we saying that we want to go into a closed session to discuss it?
Yes, to go into discussions. I don't, yeah. Herring, did you have any input?
Yes, that's what I would like to do. Go into executive session to discuss.
Council Vice President, with that clarification, would you like me to do another voice count since that wasn't part of, we were initially talking about, what does the council want to do?
Yes.
Okay, Council, we're going to take a consensus vote on whether or not to take this resolution into closed session for discussion. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
So in the closed session, will it be, I mean, will it be noted in the record that it's a closed session for personnel? Because we didn't hire the mayor. She's an elected official? And when you go into closed session, there's specific guidelines that are given as to what you can close a meeting for?
I'm asking that we go into executive session.
Epstein?
Councilwoman Ferguson, Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Vote carries to go into an executive session to discuss the resolution.
Thank you. Okay, we have minutes listed here. It can be read. We have a presentation?
Yes, Council Vice President, we have a presentation by S&amp;B Company LLC. They're the auditors.
Uh huh, okay.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Bill Seymour. I'm the engagement partner with S&amp;B and Company. And I have a presentation, Counsel Clerk. I don't know if there's a way I could get permission to share my screen.
Sure, I'll give you permission.
Thank you.
You should be able to share it out.
All right, perfect. All right. I hope everybody can see my screen here. I'm gonna walk through. This is our presentation, our required communications under generally accepted auditing standards at the conclusion of an audit, chatting on the June 30, 2023 audit results. The scope of services we were engaged to perform an audit of the June 30, 2023 financial statements, a review of the uniform financial report. That's a report that takes the city's financial statements and puts it in a fit and finish that works for the Maryland Department of Legislative Services so they can accumulate all the municipality information for the state. And then as well as working with management on a year-round basis as items are needed. The summary of the results, we've issued an unmodified, or if you will, clean opinion on the financial statements. We did not discover any instances of fraud through our procedures. I would note that our audit is not a fraud audit. That would be different in scope. But through the procedures performed, we did not note any instances of fraud. We discovered no material weaknesses in internal controls. We have a couple of recommendations for improvement for financial reporting that I will go over in a moment. And then we received the full cooperation from management. Want to thank Dean and his team for getting us all the information we needed to be able to issue or to complete the audit. At a macro level, the general fund at the conclusion of 2023 had just under a $6.5 million fund balance, which represented roughly about a $560,000 increase over the prior year. We did have an adjustment for $2.6 million in the special revenue fund to recognize ARPA revenue replaces grant revenue, which was originally recorded as unearned revenue. That $2.6 million ended up being part of about $4.4 million of additional income for the year, which ended up in overall fund balance for the year. This is a pictorial of our audit approach. The idea behind this audit approach is how we filter out risks of material misstatement. We go through a process of looking at the design and operation of controls that management has put in place to either prevent or detect errors. We go through a process to look at analytically what's in the numbers, substantive procedures such as confirmations, other vouching and other items that we would do, and then specific audit standard required items. And once again, this process allows us to garner sufficient evidence so we can issue that unmodified, or if you will, clean opinion on the statements. We look at controls at a couple of different levels. We go through the assessment of the control environment, the COSO model of controls. That is the interrelated five items of the environment, risk assessment, communication, specific control activities and monitoring. And overall, we thought that those were in pretty good shape. Then we dive down and we look at individual key processes. And treasury, we thought was okay. Estimation was good. Financial reporting and expenditures, we thought there are some suggested improvements that I'll go over in a moment. And then revenue, we have suggested improvements largely surrounding the adjustment that we had noted. So our three suggested improvements, one is looking at the timeliness of reporting. The statements are due to the state of Maryland by November 1st. Consideration of either adding additional resources to the finance department or looking at the workload of current personnel to ensure that financial closes can be done timely and allow for full investigation of any differences. Through our audit process, we noted some smaller, if you will, immaterial variances in cash and other balance sheet items that, given additional time or resources, management would have been able to make the appropriate corrections to be there. We recommended a general reserve for accounts payable of about $100,000. There isn't a process currently to record accounts payable during a typical closed period. Normally through 11 months out of the year, really not that big of a deal as the budget process with encumbrances really is what's monitored and used to get there. But when we get to the end of the year, you know, making sure that our balance sheet is correct really should go back and record the appropriate amounts that are for the liabilities. And like I said, we worked with management to come up with an estimate that we recorded. And as I mentioned, revenue adjustments, we had about $2.6 million adjustment to the financial statements to get those correct for the year. The remainder of our presentation goes through our specific required communications. This is our responsibility, our opportunity to chat with you that, you know, if there were any accounting policies or application of those accounting policies and principles, if there were items that were just barely acceptable, whether it was ultra-aggressive or ultra-conservative, we really have no issues there that we require to bring to your attention. We, there were no past adjustments that we had. So we didn't have to go through and, you know, pass on items that were there. I mentioned no fraud, no material weaknesses. We had no disagreements with management, no serious difficulties. We did receive a management representation letter. I can provide a copy if the council would like to look at that. And we did provide various, what we termed non-atest service in assisting with the drafting of the financial statements from records that management had. And I will stop there to see if there's any questions that I can answer in regards to the audit. If there's no questions, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, moving on. And we have resolutions, any discussion on any of the resolutions?
Yes, Madam President.
Councilman Herring?
Yeah, so we voted on R54, 2024. Why is that coming back? It failed, and then it's coming back again?
Council Vice President, may I?
Yes, please.
Councilman Herring, remember the wrong, the wrong contract was attached to that. And so council, it asked me to connect, put the correct one on, and in my notes, we did not vote on it. It was to come back.
Okay, okay, within the shot that we did.
Yes.
Okay.
54, let me see. Yes, that was because of the contract not being correct.
Okay, all right. Thanks a lot. I guess, again, also with R57, a resolution to high municipal grant services, we can maybe pay this gentleman, this company what, close to $40,000? And has, I haven't had a chance to talk to him. I think he needs to come before the council. Would be, any questions be asked if you want to come before council in the work session or the regular meeting? I think that still should be appropriate. We can maybe sign a contract and, again, I think we need to be able to ask questions, see if this is the best part of our person force for what we need to get done. That's it for me on the, oh, I do have a question. The resolution for the scholarship, scholarship fund. I'm not sure where council members got the information, but Ruby Lockhart was never a council member. I'm not sure why they have that in the resolution that she was a longer servant. She was never a council member. She didn't live in Glanard. So I'm not sure why that's in there. And also with this establishment of a scholarship fund, I mean, I do think that some other people I hear, that the first mayor, Mayor Swan, who was the first mayor of Glanard, who also was instrumental in getting the city chartered, would be an appropriate person. But I'm not sure why Ruby Lockhart is in here, because can anybody tell me why?
Thank you, Councilman Herring. This is Councilwoman Fareed. The research that I did, and there's not a whole lot of clear information around council members from the state. It's only listing mayor information from the research. That's what came up. So if that's not true, then we definitely need to, you know, could contact those sources and let them know that that information is not true.
Yeah, that's not, Ruby Lockhart was never a council member. Ruby Lockhart actually was the maid, or I think Mr. Petra, Mr. Petrie. And when he came to the city, he said he wanted to do some nights for her because she worked for them for so long. So they named Ruby Lockhart, because we wondered who was Ruby Lockhart. He explained to us who she was. She actually was a maid for years and years and years. So that's who she originally was. She was never a council member in the city of Glanard.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, yeah.
Uh, Council, may I ask a question about this resolution? So that you obviously want Ms. Lockhart removed. Is, in Councilman Herring, I apologize, I got a phone call as you were talking about, I think you said Mayor Swan. Are we substituting names? I missed that part. I'm sorry.
That's for, that's for the makers to decide, but, you know. I mean, I think that would be an appropriate person. I mean, the first mayor. You got the first female mayor, and I think the first mayor would be an appropriate person for me. If we're gonna do this. Also, I guess another question is, is it said they're gonna do fundraising for this scholarship also to fund this scholarship? How in... Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out. You know, was procedures going to be put in place for this fundraising? How it's going to be tracked? Is it gonna be, is it gonna be, are we gonna set it up as a department in our financials so that we can track the money and see how much is there? Has all of that been discussed or put out there or looked at? Just a question.
So...
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, so a fund would need to be established for the scholarship, and people can make donations to the scholarship. We're gonna, as a topic of discussion, one of the ways that we are looking at doing this is through an annual luncheon. So that's one of the topics of discussion, the Women in Leadership Luncheon that we're looking to host in August.
Also, I guess my thing is also with scholarships, there are so many people who need to go to college. We always set these, we always set the threshold of 3.0 with grade point averages. And, you know, everybody doesn't get 3.0. Everybody doesn't maintain 3.0. And I think that that should come down to like a 2.5. I mean, that's the average score. So those who can, who are not, you know, overachievers or whatever, they can apply and they can qualify. I've seen that over and over again, where you got a 3.0, 3.5, close to a 4.0 to get a scholarship. But you got kids that want to go to school just as much as those who's got, who's getting a 3.0, and it is 5.5 percent lower than somebody else, so they don't qualify for any type of financial assistance. I just think we need to look at that to GPA, the minimum GPA for the scholarships. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Council Vice President, may I respond quickly? And I'm sorry, I'm sorry for speaking a little bit low. So Councilman Herring, you do raise a great point. There are other things that we are anticipating on doing. There are other forms of scholarships, so stay tuned. But that, what you addressed is exactly one of the things that one of the other scholarship opportunities will address. And the only other two people that I've spoken to thus far about it is Councilman Hairston and Councilwoman Fareed. So just wanted you to know that. Thank you for bringing that point up. Oh, and I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Fareed. Sorry, just a point of clarification. The difference between that one and the one that we're discussing tonight is those would be ARPA dollars. So separate conversation, but thank you.
Madam President, may I?
Yeah, and I was just, I was just gonna add, and I think this is speaking to Councilwoman Guillaume's point, is that there are other types of aid that would, that we can make available to students who are looking to attend higher education, whether it be college or otherwise. But I think when we're talking about scholarship, it's for the academic achievement and learning of a high level. So scholarships typically are not designed to be accessible to to everyone, or I think it would be very difficult to select who should be selected. These are generally merit-based, based upon the academic performance.
Okay.
But I do think that there are other opportunities to provide aid to students.
So I, Madam President, may I? Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we can look at the scholarship criteria, though, and, you know, refine that. But just keep it in mind that these are just two scholarships, and we need a way to really narrow it. Because I'm sure there will be a lot of applications. But go ahead, Council.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I guess that's my concern, because again, everybody is not 3.0 student, you know, and some people just don't take tests. We base so much on these test scores, you know, and where the person ranks based on these test scores and these numbers. When you're missing out good quality students who may do excellent in college, just because they have a 2.5 don't mean they won't do excellent in college. It don't mean they need to help. You know, I just, I just think that, I mean, I look at that, and I just feel that, you know, that's once again, we're following criteria that was put in place ready to keep us out of, keep us out of college. When we were coming up, you know, back in the day. So now we're doing the same thing. I just think that, you know, 2.5 is, you know, an average student, but I'm with the average student to go to college. I don't, I mean, you know, I want everybody to go to college if they can. But I don't want to make it out of the reach of those who just got a 2.5, was 0.5% lower than, you know, what they say is academic success, which personally 3.0 don't mean you're always academic success, especially in this day and age with AI and everything else. So, and if you're using Opera money, don't we have to commit those dollars by like the end of this year?
So these particular scholarships would not be utilizing ARPA funds? I think Councilwoman Guillaume can speak further to it, but what she is proposing would need to be, is to use those funds.
No, I'm just saying, yeah, that's what I was saying. The ones that you're proposing to do with Opera money, isn't there a deadline where we have to commit those?
Not necessarily. We would have to basically establish it. But in, one of the reasons why I haven't done it yet is because I'm going to be speaking to Mr. Himmler to just get things in order. But right now, that's what I'm gonna have.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to be sure. I could have sworn I heard that you either have a contract or the money's actually committed to a project by the end of this year.
Meaning this year, meaning December, are you saying December 31, or you're saying this year?
2024.
I'm sorry, December 31, 2024. Oh, yes. So for sure. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on the agendas, I mean, the legislations listed? Okay, if not, we will move to topics of discussion. Oh, does anyone have any comments on the report or questions? Okay, now we will move to topics of discussion. So see, the first one is budget review, schedule. President Curtis is not here. I don't know whether he wanted to say something prior to Mrs. Stewart. So we're just gonna move to Church Street sidewalk, Councilman Herring.
Yeah, well, let me, I'm gonna go back to number one, because I do want to get a clarification. Where are we able to advertise in that budget? Because again, we gotta advertise the budget. I think it was 14 days before public hearing. So that means right now we're looking at, you know, the end of June. So I mean, we can't even start on a budget until close to, like, well into July. So I'm like, is the council gonna? Are we gonna work on a budget over the summer, or we just gonna postpone it until September? But I guess that's a discussion we need to have later, but I just... But I guess that's a discussion we need to have later. But I, I, I just, you know, I'm not, I mean, because I think it's gonna, it's gonna need quite a bit of work on it. Looking at some of the stuff that's in there, it's gonna take some time. And, um, you know, working throughout the summer on this budget is not a, you know, I'm not, not my idea of fun. So I just need to know from, I mean, I mean, yeah, are we, I mean, I, I, maybe it's between the council clerk and the, and the treasurer. Have we posted anything in newspaper? Have we, well, I know the council hasn't picked a date, but have we even gotten the summary ready to go out? So that we can advertise this. And if not, can we get the summary ready so that the council can make a decision on when we're gonna plan to meet? And what, what are we gonna put in the newspaper for to advertise the public hearing?
Council Vice President Ferguson, okay, uh, Councilman Herring, I've made inquiries about this a couple of times. Um, and, and mentioned it to, uh, Mr. Stewart also and, and to Mr. Simpson. Yes, you're correct. It has to be advertised fourteen days in advance of, of a public hearing, has to be advertised fourteen days in advance. And so whatever date the council decides, we really gotta stick to it. Um, and so that's why I was hoping we would get some guidance in terms of dates so that I would know when I need to publish it. I did talk with Mr. Stewart, and I think he can have it ready for me, uh, quickly. But we just need to get clarification on when the council feels that we'll, we'll be ready to hold a hearing.
Mr. Stewart, did you have any, um, additional input?
Thanks for, um, asking. Um, yes, so I am working with the council clerk in order to determine when would be the best time to have the, um, the advertisement done. Um, as soon as possible, I could get the summary done so that the advertisement can go out. But we really needed some guidance as to, um, when we should get this out. Because we don't want to be, um, setting a date that would go against the council. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna be clear. So the, so the summer, summary will be ready. When we give you the date, it'll be ready to go. Once, once we give you the date, it should be ready to go.
Yes, we'll have it.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Okay, well, we should get on that as soon as possible, because I'm with Councilman Herring. I don't wanna wait till all summer or in September. So we will get that to you, um, Mr. Stewart. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else on topic, um, um, the budget review schedule?
Council Vice President, if I may.
Yes, Councilwoman.
I believe, um, and Mr. Stewart can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe he actually did have a, a kind of a, a overview of a schedule that you thought, um Mr. Stewart, do you still have that? Is it, can we, can we share that with council? Um, according for them to take.
I don't have it now.
No, no. No, I meant, I could share it in the morning if you still have it, just so we can move forward.
Yes, I'll have it. I'll have it in the morning.
So we'll send it out for council's, um, input and direction.
So, so what it was, it's a schedule of the bu- budget process, the days that we were recommending. And, uh, we just need to send that out to see if, um, if we are still in line with the council. So I'll have that ready for her tomorrow so she could send to the, the full council for, um, suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Thank you, Councilwoman Bailey Walsh. Okay, um, Church Street Sidewalk, Councilman Herring.
Yes, um, the Church Street Sidewalk, and I'm, um, reach out to Mr. Simpson because I think we need to just move, move ahead and, and look at getting those sidewalks, uh, done. Um, again, like I said, I ride up there going school hours and it's, you know, people in the street, kids in the street, mothers in the street with their strollers. I think we need to just go ahead and move forward, um, sidewalk getting done. We have opera money that's available for this capital project. Um, and I did ask Mr. Simpson, asked Mr. Simpson to reach out to NZI. And I saw if he was able to do the walkthrough with him or not, and get an estimate on the cost. So Mr. Simpson, did, weren't you able to?
It's good evening, uh, uh, Councilman Herring, Vice President of Council. Yes, uh, we did a walkthrough uh, on Church Street on Thursday evening, afternoon. Uh, I'm hoping to have a proposal similar to that, uh, uh, for the Glen Arden sidewalk that we just recently did. I should hopefully have that to you, uh, this week, no, later than maybe Thursday.
Okay, all right. Um, that's it. I mean, we're also looking at, um, we also reached out to the county for, um see if we can get funding through the county council. Um, I'm not sure where that is, you know, seem like everybody's cutting budgets. Uh, this, uh, for twenty twenty five. I know the state is, and usually when the state does it, the county's right behind them. So I'm not sure if we're gonna get the funding or not. Um, so, but we are looking at trying to get something from them also, so. Um, that's it for the Church Street.
So the issue, I think, was the issue originally, um, a concern about the, the lampposts?
Yeah, that's gonna be a major issue, because I think there's, I think either two or three lampposts have to be moved. So we'll have to get into, um uh, BG and E, and I think Mr. Simpson will get in touch with whoever we need to get in touch with to move those poles.
Okay, that's good. Because I get, I had several, um, parents complaining to them, they walk, you know, their kids or the kids come, so, um I'm in agreement with that. I, I didn't really know why it fell to the ground when we first looked at it, but nonetheless, um, I'm glad to move on with that. Um, okay. Did you finish with that one?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, Mr. Councilman Herring, GPS.
Yes, uh, I just wanna get an update from, uh, uh, Mr. Simpson on, if y'all with his GPS.
Excuse me, um, uh, Councilwoman, uh, were you, did you ever hand up for the, um, sidewalk?
Uh, yes, I did, concerning the sidewalk.
Okay, I'm sorry, um.
If I may, thank you, Council Vice President. If I may, uh, Mr. Simpson, when you spoke with NZI, did they mention anything about, uh having, uh, lamp, uh, uh, street lamps moved, removed, not removed, but moved from one spot to another? Was that a issue in their, um, walkthrough?
We can possibly work around that. I'm waiting for the proposal to come back, and then I'll be able to tell you exactly where we from where we are. Uh, it's very possible, uh, that the lamp, the, the poles may not have to be moved. But I couldn't tell you definitively until I got the information.
All right, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that that was, uh, it was either or, not necessarily, necessarily, uh, a have to for the lamppost. Thank you. Thank you, Council Vice President.
You're welcome. Okay, you can move forward, uh, Councilman Herring, sorry.
Okay, the next one is, uh, just, uh, Mr. Simpson, if you can just give me an update on where we are with the GPS.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, we do have a meeting that's scheduled for June tenth, uh, which would involve fleet management and their stat, uh, managers there. Um, when we last left off, we wanted to do as the county had done, to have fleet present, uh, with the AT&T, the same Geotab devices, uh, present to ensure beforehand the vehicles are looked at with the remaining eleven, which are police vehicles. And once the device is put on, then to also have it checked afterwards. Um, both, uh, Steve Graham, uh, and the Lanham manager are, are out. Uh, I do have messages into them. Uh, they are aware of, uh, I need to do this sooner than later. Uh, and I should have some feedback, uh, exactly when those dates will be, hopefully by the June tenth meeting, um, that we'll have here in the conference room.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else on this topic? Okay, um, the Gold Room, Councilman Herring.
Yeah, um, I just need to, I mean, when we last spoke on the Gold Room, I know there was only one thing that was looked at, that they say it was consensus on being waived, uh, you know, the consensus on changes in the, in the rules and regulations that we had. And I know it was the waiver. We all said we wanted the waiver included in, uh, rules and regulations. But I, there were some other things that I'm gonna ask, uh, uh, Ms. Bailey Walsh to give me the other five items that we looked at, because I'd like to get a consensus on those items, too.
Um, it was actually more than five. I sent the email out. If you give me a minute to, to pull it up, I can.
One of, one of the items I know was this, this whole thing about using to-go containers to take food out of the gold room and not using plates with aluminum foil, which I still don't understand to this day what the issue is with that. Um, people are walking around for four hours in a gold room with plates, open plates uncovered. So it seems like it's just another way to keep people from taking food out of there. So if you don't have to go containers, it'll make you throw the food in, throw your, throw the food away. And I think that we need to get a consensus on, uh, on that, that, um, plates covered by foil are not restricted. I'm, I'm not understanding the whole, we, we take foil, we take plates have a foil when we have events. And I don't understand the whole logic with that. I just wanna get a consensus on whether that's, whether the council wanna allow that or not. I don't see the issue with it. I don't, I think it's just another way to, um, because nobody goes, come in there that's gonna bring food in, is gonna have, can go or everybody's not gonna have to-go containers. So that means either people gotta take the food with them or they have to throw it out. And I think if people wanna take a plate home or take food home with them, they should be able to, if they got a plate, there's some foil on top of it, let them take it. Um, it's not gonna make the rug any dirtier than it already is with people, with two hundred and fifty people walking around with plates already getting food and walking to tables. So I'd just like to get a consensus on that.
Okay, um, moving on. Women in Leadership Luncheon, Councilwoman.
Madam President, before you do, I'm waiting for the clerk to come back with the other items that I had. Yeah. So yes, I would like to ask for a consensus on that, on that foil wrapping plate, Madam President, if we can get the council to get a consensus on that. Ask them if they want it in there or they don't want it in there. If they want it in there, if they wanna, uh, allow it, if they wanna allow people to take food out in plates covered with aluminum foil. I'm not sure what the risk, like I said, I've never seen that before at any place, that you have to have to-go containers.
Okay. So, um, you wanna wait, uh, for the council clerk or go ahead and do that now?
We, we're gonna do it now.
Okay, so the consensus is, um removing food on a plate with a aluminum foil versus?
At the go container.
What is, what was your last thing you said?
Oh, is taking food out, either allowing people to take food out on a plate covered in foil. That's what I, that's what, that's what, that's what I would like to get a consensus on.
Okay. So the consensus is, um yes or no? Um, yes, if you want to allow people to take food out covered in aluminum foil, no, if you have to. Um, because we don't have the council clerk yet here, so, um Councilwoman.
So I'm, I'm back.
Oh, okay, okay.
I can go ahead and take the voice vote if you'd like. Councilwoman Faree.
The motion that we're making is not clear to me. Are we saying that we're ta- voting to take out? Can you clarify, please?
I believe, Councilman Herring, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the vote is, the consensus vote is to allow people to take food out, and if so, to allow them to not have to have the option of a closed container, but to be able to fo- foil over the plate and carry it out. Is that correct?
Yeah, it did. To allow people to take food out of, out of the gold room and on a plate covered in foil. That's it.
I think I'm confused at this point. So you're saying to allow that?
Yeah, to allow them to take food out.
The area that you're talking about is stated in the rules.
Yes, in the rules.
That, what is in the rules again?
Right now, in the rules, it says you are not allowed to take food out of the gold room on a plate covered in foil. Only in the to-go.
Okay, got it, okay.
And I'm just trying to say that I think it's ridiculous when we should just allow people to take food out, have it, you know, and on a plate covered in foil. That's what I'm asking for the consensus for, allowing people to take food out of the gold room on a plate covered in foil.
Madam President?
Yes, um.
I just wonder if we have to be so specific. Can we just say that people are allowed to take food out of the gold room and just leave it at that? Whether it be a to-go container, a Ziploc bag, a paper plate covered with another paper plate or with foil paper? I just don't feel like, I'm not sure why we're getting into the specificity. I mean, I understand what we're trying to correct, but in correcting, I don't know if we should specify what the means. I, I wonder if we should just say people can take food out of the gold room.
Madam President?
Councilman Herring.
Yes, I agree with Councilwoman Faree. I, I don't care how they take it out, if mom did take it out. I, I agree with her one hundred percent. I was just adhering to what the rules said. You know, so I think they should just be allowed to take food out of the gold. Like you said, I don't think they need to be so specific.
Okay, so the consensus would be that, um, people are allowed to take food out of the gold room?
Yes, is that, Councilwoman Faree, that's what you're recommending?
Yes, and I'm trying not to laugh because I'm not sure, like, why, why is this a rule? Why are we trying to? Uh, is there some context that I'm missing as to why we would try to regulate how or whether or not people are allowed to take food out?
I don't know. I, I, I was wondering the same thing. I didn't, that's why I didn't understand why I was in the rules.
I don't know if I got there either. So we can go ahead and take the consensus, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Faree.
Yes, uh, I'm agreeing to state that people can take food out of the gold room, period.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Gillum?
What Councilwoman Faree just said.
Councilman Harrison?
Um, yes, I think. Am I, I'm, this is for people to take food out, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Absane.
Uh, Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis has joined us?
Yes.
Okay, vote carries. The next point was, um Councilman Herring asked for a review of the, 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 his suggestion was to lower the rental rates during the week. Remember that it was proposed to, to, to raise the rates. Um, if you want me to just continue?
Yes, just continue, because I mean, with that one, I mean, I, I got that, like I said, we're not doing much business. I got the numbers for the weekly activity and it's not much at all. So I'm not understanding why we're raising the rates, rates from one hundred to nine hundred dollars. Um, I don't think we're gonna get any business, but, you know, that's for the council to decide. I think that, um, yeah, that really needs to be looked at. That, that rate is entirely too high for, um when you're not doing business already. So, yeah, go ahead. What's the next one?
The next one is, uh, there shouldn't be a deposit charge for gratis.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I thought gratis was gratis, honestly. I thought everything, it was, it was, you know. But I think we discussed it enough, and I think the council will feel that this, they should have some deposit in case something does get messed up. So they'll get it back. So I'm not gonna, I'm gonna move on from that one.
Okay, um the next point was that, uh, you, the council should not be limited to the number of events held during prime time.
That, yeah, that, I think, that, that was, I don't think we ever came to a consensus on that.
We did.
And I don't think the council should be held to prime ti- I mean, to non-prime time hours. That should come out. And I'd just like to get a consensus on that, to have that taken out. And I'd just like to get a consensus on that, to have that taken out.
Do you want a voice vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
That Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
What is this vote?
It's a, it's a consensus vote to, um, remove the statement that council, again, what was, um, the council can only have, I think it was one event during prime time?
That, no, it was, it was just that council can only have an event during non-prime time.
No, I'm sure, I'm sorry, non-prime time.
So this, this thing, we can have more than one event?
No, the council has to have events at, what was it, non-prime time, correct? Councilman Herring?
Right, it says, right now they're saying the council can only have events during non-prime time. And we're trying to take that out because all our events are always during prime time.
Oh, yes.
Councilman Jones?
Okay, um, and I wanted to make clarity to a, to a statement I made too also during the meeting about, uh, uh, council people having one event per year. That was for personal events for a council person. That's what I was speaking of. Cause I think gratis speaks of that a council person can, uh, uh, get the goal room for gratis once a year for personal things. Like if I wanted to have a repass there for one of my family members or my family member wanted to have a repass for me. But as far as council events, we have more than one event a year. So there's, that, that, that would be seen ludicrous for me to say that, um, uh, we only have one, one event per year. We don't, we have many events and most of the events are during prime time. So I have no problem with that. Uh, we can, uh, take that out. Thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry, Council Vice President Ferguson?
Um, yeah, I vote to remove that.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next one was, uh, that, that was not decided upon was, uh, to, uh, Councilman Herring voiced objection to being, to there being a charge for checks not cashed, refund checks not cashed.
Yeah, I didn't understand that. I, I, um, Mr. President, I didn't understand that, that we're gonna charge somebody because they didn't catch the check that we gave them. Can you even do that?
Yeah.
I don't even think you can do that. I don't think you can do that. I've never seen that a day in my life. In any, 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 anything, why would we charge somebody because they didn't, they didn't cash our check then for money that we owe them?
So the, the answer to your question is, uh, your question was, can we? The answer is yes. Will we is up to the council. I believe the rationale behind it is you have, I believe, three months to cash your check. And if you don't cash your check, then we have to reprint the check, which costs time and paper and mailing. So I think that's the genesis behind, hey, if you're not responsible enough to cash your check within three months and you come back and ask for us to reprint your check because you failed to cash your check, then you have to pay the fee for us to print the check out again.
So if we don't give them their check in the thirty days that they're, that they're, we, we, they were required to do it, are we gonna pay them an additional thirty-five dollars? Because we're.
No, no, this is, ha- Mr. Herring, Councilman Herring, I owe you a check. I pay you, I give you your check, you receive it. You have ninety days to cash your check. If you don't cash your check, then it expires. You can no longer cash it because you failed to do so in third, in, in three months. So you come back and say, hey, well, I didn't, I never cashed my check. Can I have another one? Well, yes, you can have another one, but it's gonna cost an administrative fee of thirty-five dollars for us to reprint, um, your check. I think that's the rationale behind it.
I mean, just say, I've been in, working in business, private nonprofit concern for over forty years and I've never, never had nobody come back and say, we're gonna charge you for money that we owe them. So I don't think that's a good, I don't think that's a good business practice. I really don't. I think if you, people lose checks sometime, and I don't think you're gonna run into that that often. People lose checks, I think it's, I think that's a, um, another way. It's, it's a money grab. I mean, we need to start trying to do a money grab. I just think that that should not be in the rules. We should not sit there and penalize somebody because they didn't catch a check in ninety days and they, and we owe them money. So, you know, you said we're gonna refund them their security deposit of a thousand dollars or whatever they owe, five hundred dollars. They need to get their five hundred dollars back, so.
Yeah, I completely understand. I'll just answer the question. Um, and that's, that's a fair, that's a fair statement. Uh, Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, I like to know when we're gonna stop issuing checks and when we can just start doing, um, electronic payment methods so that we don't have that administrative, uh, burden of printing checks, et cetera, just period.
Great question. We'll follow up with that after the, uh, consensus to remove it. We can ask Mr. Stewart.
Right, and sorry, that's relevant here because if we just did an electronic transfer to them, then we wouldn't have to be worried about if they cash the check or not. And whether there'd be a cost associated with it.
That's fair, but, um, no matter how many, if we go electronic, there'll still be those who want a, a physical check though.
And I bet those are the people who will cash their checks right away.
All right, um, Mr. Stewart, is there any plan to switch?
Okay, thanks that I pressed there. Um, so what's happening now is I have been testing and making sure that the system is secure with regard to making payments online. We have, um, been paying utilities online. We have been paying, um, other, um, like insurance and so on through the website. And, um, currently with regard to the, the redates, we have been going, um, you know, ACH or we get check payment through the bank. So we are getting to that point where I feel that we're a bit more secure and flexible in making payments using, um, ACHs or payment by the bank's checks. Um, I now I'm thinking of putting in a process, um, procedures, standard operating procedures just to ensure that the whole process is, um, is reasonable first and is, will be able to be authorized by the, the check signers. So we're getting to that point and it's very soon we'll move to, uh, mainly, uh, ACH payments. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Hairston?
Thank you. So I wanted to know, um, that we go and charge them for the checks. Is it a, um, communication sent to them when they receiving their checks to let them know that they only got a certain amount of time to cash it before they are charged?
It's in the, um, what was this? Ms. Bun is here. It's in the, their contract. Uh, so they'll be aware of it, uh, in the contract that they sign, that they review and sign.
Um, Mr. Curtis?
Mr. Stewart? Yes, can I just say something with regard to the, um, the changing of check and reprinting of checks? What is happening is whenever we get to that point where someone either lose a check or something has happened, one of the greatest charges that we get hit with is a stop payment, um, charge from the bank. And that's like from thirty-five dollars, sometimes up to forty-five dollars. So if someone loses their check and came back and say, hey, I lost my check. Now I have to stop, put a stop payment on that, but it's gonna be a thirty-five dollars charge. Um, are we supposed to just consume that, that cost? Or are we supposed to pass it on to the person who is negligibly handling their checks? Mr. Curtis, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Uh, thank you for that additional information. Are all hearts and minds clear before we do this consensus? Anything else on this particular? Mr. Herring?
Yeah, so let me just say, ask this. So if he gets lost in the mail, they're gonna lose thirty-five dollars because they didn't get their check. They just said I didn't receive it in ninety days.
That's fair. That's, I'm, I understand. We, um, it, it's for the council to decide. I think we've come up with like many scenarios of what can happen, but it's all on us. So whether we're going to keep it in there or not, so, um, we'll go with your request for consensus to remove the, it's thirty-five dollars, correct? Yeah. Consensus to remove the fee for, um, um, failure to cash a check within three months. Yes, to remove it? No, to keep it in? All right, Councilwoman Guillaume? Councilwoman Guillaume?
I'm fine with removing it.
Okay, all right. Councilwoman Fareed?
This is removing a thirty-five dollar fee, right?
Yes.
Yes, remove it, yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, to remove it.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And, yes, all right, we can remove the thirty-five dollar fee. Council Clerk, are we good?
No, we've got about four, four or five more to go. Um, the next one is, uh, under the security deposit, uh, Councilman Herring suggested adding verbiage about damage to the structure.
I'm sorry? Say that again?
Under the, uh, under the area of security deposit, he wanted to add damage to the, to the room or it, or the structure, uh, under those things listed that a security deposit could be, could be held because it damaged, uh, something in the room. Just another item to add under security deposit.
I don't have it in front of me. I thought that was in there.
I have it as an action.
Do we need a consensus on that? I think that's common sense.
Okay. The next is page five, under the note for cancellation fee. They, there, it was suggested that there be a cancellation fee of, if, uh, if the room was canceled under ninety days. And I have here, please reconsider. Please reconsider, change verbiage.
No, that one, that one was if you cancel with more than ninety days, you get your full refund back. But I think, I think right now the contract is that we, you would lose, you would have to pay cancellation fee no matter when you cancel. And I was saying, but if you cancel ninety days prior, ninety days or more prior to your event, I see maybe you should get a hundred percent refund because that's what the contract says. You get a hundred percent refund. But then, then you refer, then the contract and the, and the rules and regulations says you gotta pay a cancellation fee whenever you cancel. And I think it's the cancellation fee of, I don't know how much it was. But I was just saying, I mean, I thought that verbiage should have changed that if you, if it's saying you're gonna get a hundred percent refund because you canceled prior in with, in ninety-one days or more, then you should be able to get your full refund. I just think there's conflict in there. If you're gonna, if, if, if it was, if you're gonna take out a cancellation fee, then it needs to be a cancellation fee. It need to be stated in the very beginning. And you won't get a one hundred, you'll never get a one hundred percent refund no matter when you cancel. And the rules are saying you get a hundred percent refund, then later on it says you'll pay a cancellation fee.
Yeah, I think those are different, Councilman Herring.
No, it's on, what page is that on, um, Madam Clerk?
Page five is what I have.
Yeah, it says, it says, under, it gives you the listing of your, uh, cancellation periods. This is all under cancellation. But it says, please note that all cancellations will occur, will occur, it should be incur. That needs to change that. A cancellation processing fee of fifty dollars.
Yeah.
So I was just saying, it, then you need to say, and it shouldn't say you should, your, your deposit will be, your full deposit will be refunded in number one. It should be, uh, deposit refunded minus fifty dollar cancellation fee or either just, yeah, you won't get a full deposit. Cause it's saying you're gonna get a full deposit. If you, if you book and you cancel eighty-nine days, uh, or more booking date, eighty-nine days or more prior to your event, then you're entitled to a full deposit.
Yeah.
But you're saying, but this is, but you're not. You're entitled to a full deposit minus fifty dollars. So you're not getting a full deposit. You're getting a partial deposit. So. I would just be like, you told me I'm getting a full deposit. You should give me my full deposit. I shouldn't be charged a fifty dollar cancellation fee, especially when you got almost six months to rebook the place.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I understand. I, I, I understand what you're saying, but we're just talking about the wording, correct? Because there's still a fifty dollar.
Cancellation fee than just do a cancellation fee, deposit minus fifty dollars. You know?
So that's, that's what I'm saying. So, so we're talking about just the verbiage, say you'll get your deposit minus the cancellation fee.
Right.
All right. That's fine. I don't, I mean, unless you require a, a consensus, but I think that's, we could reword it to, to say that.
That's fine.
What's the next one?
The next one had to do with who can come in before the actual event starts. There was a discussion on page six about the wedding coordinator being, not being allowed to come in.
I'm not gonna beat that dead horse because I went around around all the last time and I don't feel like doing that again. So I'm gonna leave that one alone.
Okay.
All right.
The next.
Because I think we're gonna get, we give them more hours than we should be and we still gonna be out of money, but go ahead.
Okay, the next is.
One, one second, one second. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council President. Um, that one concerning the, I wanted to give a little clarity to that one. I, uh, concerning the, uh, letting people come in beforehand, because there's some people that come in and rent the room for a certain time and then they show up maybe an hour or two earlier and wanna, wanna come in. And I think that's where she was trying to address that issue. Whereas if you've, if you've, uh, gotten a room from, uh, eleven to seven, then your hour before is ten o'clock and that's when you could get to come or you come at eleven and leave at seven or after. Uh, but it's there, there are some persons that show up and that, they want to, uh, enter the, come to the room earlier than, than they, uh, then they're required to. And I think that's why she put that in there to address that situation. Because that does happen often. Thank you, Council President.
And Councilwoman Jones? Council Clerk, what's the next one?
The next one is to not, uh, capacity seating, don't limit it to eight chairs per table.
And I, I honestly, I don't even think that should be a rule. I mean, I mean, you can say eight, I get, most people, like I said, people can do up to ten chairs per table. And I think it should be the option of the renter. You know, whether they're gonna be uncomfortable with ten tables to, ten chairs to a table or not, that's a decision. So I don't, I don't know why, you know, we're going with this eight chairs per table thing. You know, if the renter is fine with ten chairs per table. Eight chairs may be recommended, but if they wanna do ten chairs, I think, I don't think that should be the hard and fast rule that needs to be stuck. I mean, I don't even think we really need to change it. If a person wanted to do ten, ten ta, ten chairs, it should be, they should have to do ten chairs. But unfortunately, I know it's an issue. Um, bit of renter who wanted to move a chair to a table, and that blew up into an issue. And I don't, I think, I think it should be, um, it should be often to the, I would say no more than ten chairs to a table.
So, I don't, I'm So what are we doing here, Councilman Harry?
That's, I think that should read no more than ten chairs to a table. That'll give you the flexibility, if you want eight, you want six, you want five, you won't be stuck with eight. Because some people may not want eight chairs to a table, they may want six chairs.
So, you're asking for consensus to switch it from eight to ten?
I'm asking to switch it from no, no more than ten chairs per table. Right now it says eight chairs per table. So I say no more than ten chairs per table.
Okay. Consensus to add a language to no more than ten chairs per table. Um, Councilwoman Guillaume?
I pass, I really don't care.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Fareed?
This is to not limit the number of seats at a table?
Correct.
I don't think we should limit the number of seats at a table.
So you are a yes to switch the verbiage?
I am saying I don't think we should limit the number of, of seats. I
So is it yes or no?
Pass.
Okay. Um, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. If the city of Glen Arden, if the Gold Room can accommodate ten seats to a table, if they have tables to accommodate that?
I have no issue with that. But if they don't have the tables to accommodate it, and I was thinking that, um, that was one of the things Miss Bun mentioned. I don't know, I would need clarity from Miss Bun. That was another thing, why she isn't on here with us while we're making these, going back over this, but, um.
She, just for clarity, she, she was on here, and she said that the table cannot comfortably, comfortably accommodate ten chairs per table, which is why she put eight.
Okay, then, uh, I would stick with the, uh, eight.
So it's no to switch it to ten?
Yes, no to switch to the ten. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Hairston?
Yes, I'm taking it.
Okay. Councilman Harry?
Yes, um, actually, I'm looking at it right now, and we have five foot tables, and it says you can fit ten chairs to a five foot round table. Whether Miss Bun feels it's comfortable or not, that's her personal preference. She's not the renter. The renter, if they feel it's comfortable for them, that's what it is. But right now I'm looking at, what they have online, a sixty foot round table can comfortably seat, um, ten, I mean, can, can seat, uh, ten.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Alright. Um, one, two, three. Uh, Vice President Ferguson?
Um, providing we have the tables, um, as discussed, no more than ten to a table, so.
Yeah, that'd be yes for you. My voters, no. Yes.
Okay, yes.
My voters, no. Um, I, I'll leave it up to the Gold Room Coordinator to.
Uh, Mr. President? You have to go back to the two people that passed.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not finished with saying.
Okay, well, you haven't asked them yet, you already, they say you need them to the coordinator? And you haven't gone back to the other council members to get their opinion, they gotta pass twice.
I, I understand, I understand. I was about to go back to the people who passed. I was simply saying that mine was no, and that I'm just gonna leave it up to the, the, uh, Gold Room Coordinator uh, to make that determination. Councilwoman Guillaume?
Sure, for me, um, my vote is it, um, we can have more than whatever amount at a table, because sometimes people can actually rent their own tables if, you know, if, I, I've had an event at the Gold Room in the past where I had my outside vendor bring the tables that I wanted, and I just don't wanna limit it to a certain number because of what the Gold Room currently has in inventory versus what I can bring as an outside guest. I'm sorry, as a, as a guest with an outside vendor.
Okay, so yes. And Council, Councilwoman Fareed?
So my answer is neither a yes or no, that's what I'm saying. I don't think we should even specify an amount. I think we should say that people can put how many seats they wanna put at the table. I don't know why it has to be eight or ten. It, I just, I don't know why we're policing these things so tightly. If, if the event planner owner wants to have eleven seats at a table, and they feel comfortable doing that, I, I don't know why we care.
Yeah. Alright. So passes verbiage, no more than ten. Next, Council Clerk? Council Clerk?
I'm sorry, I'm just talking. The podium and the microphone, there shouldn't be a charge, an extra charge to use them. That was a suggestion.
Okay. Uh, consensus on the microphone podium being free. Councilwoman Guillaume, Guillaume, yes for free, no for not?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Alright, Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
I am a no. Alright, it will be free. Is that it?
The only other thing I had was the one item under the, uh, community room, and that was to add the waiver to that as well. And I think the county the, the waive.
I'm sorry, what are we doing here?
Their, their, the last item was to add uh, the waiver to the community room rules as well. That they could sign a waiver.
For the food?
The food, yes.
Yeah, we did that last week. It's a waiver for both the the Gold Room and the um, okay.
That's it.
Alright. Go on, to. Okay. Uh, the women in, in leadership luncheon. Councilwoman Fareed and Guillaume?
Um, yes, thanks, thank you. Is that? Is that, is that feedback from me?
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, for you and Guillaume, uh, Council.
No, no, I, I heard feedback, I wasn't sure if that was coming from me.
Oh, no, actually, we can't hear it.
Okay. Um, thank you. So the Women in Leadership Luncheon is, um, an idea that we have and would like to host on August tenth. Um, the purpose of this luncheon is just a celebration of the incredible contribution of women leaders in our community. And it serves as an opportunity to honor their achievements, inspire, and inspire the next generation of leaders. Um, here we my initial thinking was that we would, uh, do this for just, um, female students, but I believe that women leaders inspire both females and males, and so that's why the, uh, accompanying scholarships would be awarded to both males and females. Um, by raising funds for this, we aim to empower those young people from historically underrepresented groups to pursue careers in political science, public administration, and community leadership. Um, Council President, did you have a question? Looks like you.
No, go, go ahead, finish, I'll save my questions to the end.
Okay, um, and so the luncheon would be, and this is what we needed to discuss, um, based upon how much if we pass the legislation on the scholarship, how much the city would be committed to funding, um, on an annual basis. The thinking was that we would charge twenty-five dollars per person to attend the luncheon, with all proceeds going towards the scholarship. And the awardees would be, so, um, would be announced at the luncheon.
Okay. My question, are we talking about are we combining two things, a scholarship and a Women's in Leadership Luncheon?
So they're complementary. So the Women in Leadership Luncheon is, um, designed to really inspire young people to continue on the path of, um, political science and civic engagement careers, so that we can help build a pipeline within the city of Glen Arden for those young people to come back and hopefully run for city council one day. And so that would be the purpose of the scholarship, and we would have people um, buy tickets to help fund that, so that we would identify scholars in the city of Glen Arden who would then, um, receive these scholarships based upon the criteria that we set.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion on this topic?
Yes, Ms. President.
Councilwoman Harry?
So y'all will be putting a line item in the budget for you know, to fund the event, correct?
Yes, that's why we're bringing it up, bringing it up now. Um, to get, to get the council's, uh, consensus on that, because it would need to be aligned, since it's August, it would go into next fiscal year, so this would be
Okay.
a next fiscal year event.
Yeah.
And we have yeah, I just wanted to also note that we have identified, um, a caterer from Glen Arden for this event, Soulful Catering. I don't know if you all remember, the young lady came to our meeting um, and, and spoke a few, um, so we, we really wanted to do that as well. Because really, the purpose of this is to highlight all of the great accomplishments and contributions that the city of Glen Arden has made to Prince George's County and Maryland state government, and just get people inspired to know that they're coming from a place where, um, leaders are bred, and have them, you know, feel comfortable that if they go to school, they don't have to you know, move somewhere else in order to have that kind of future, they can have that right here and help further the, um, city of Glen Arden. And doing that, we wanna promote and sponsor, you know, people within Glen Arden through the catering efforts and any vendors that we would use for this event.
Okay. Awesome.
I'm sorry.
Alright. Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Uh, next up is Ryan Holmes' permit approval and MOU agreement, uh, for trash collection. Mr. Simpson, did you wanna take the lead on that?
Yes, 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 good evening. Um, just wanted to point out a couple of things that Ryan Holmes uh, were waiting to hear back, uh, exactly when they've achieved their permits, so that they can come before the council again for approval for the next phase, uh, of construction. Um, also, with that being said, um, I think, uh, co-manager might be on it, he can speak a little bit more about, uh, the permitting process. Uh, with that being said, the phase that they're finishing up, uh, will require, uh, trash services. Um, I've been speaking with Ryan Holmes briefly, uh, as well as the manager there. Um, in, um, MOU would definitely need to be in place, um, to be able to provide trash services. Uh, from what I understand, and I'm waiting on confirmation, uh, Ryan Holmes will be acting as the HOA uh, as well there. Uh, so just wanted to bring that to council's attention, and that, that should be coming up real soon.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Any comments or questions as relates to this topic?
Did it give you an option to activate, oh wait? She up.
Um, uh, Council Clerk, could you make me the co-host, please? Thank you. Thank you. Alright. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Simpson, we'll get if we will receive more information on that, so we can make sure we put that uh, and stay ahead of that, so that that could be in place, um, when Ryan Holmes, Holmes are completed, I believe. So. Okay. And last one, Mr. Simpson, uh, Woodmore HOA camera installation requests?
Yes, um, I was contacted by the, uh, Woodmore Town Center HOA Treasurer. Uh, they are proposing, uh, which has been included in, I guess, the email packet. Uh, they want to install stop sign cameras. Um, I informed them to provide that information to me, so that I can present that to the council, so uh, you can decide on what direction you would like for us to go there.
Stop sign cameras?
Yes, stop sign cameras, I believe in two locations. Uh, as it was presented to me, and as it states in the documentation that's provided, uh, they want to be able to deter, uh, some of the issues that they have driving through those two particular locations, and also generate whatever revenue to help bolster the desire to improve uh, street safety, uh, and things, uh, according to the letter.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. So, uh, enforcement, it's, these gonna be automatic cameras that go to, that do, that do the same, that, uh, do the same thing as, uh, cameras, uh, street cameras.
My understanding, it is very similar to that. Uh, this, this is the first time I've heard of stop sign cameras. Um, so it was really interesting to sort of read about, uh, some of that. Uh, so from what I understand and what was shared with me, uh, that they will be able to do, do as such, um, very similar to the, the speed cam.
Well, so, will this also go to the chief to, to, uh, take a look at, so that because I think once, when you put the, uh, cameras up, the street cameras up, that, um, the police also look at those, uh, violations, and they're also the ones that sign off on whether you get the violation or not, if I'm not mistaken. So.
I, yes ma'am, I believe so. I believe that's primarily the reason why they, uh, would like the city to take on that, and they would actually, as it reads in their letter, uh, share the revenue uh, that would be generated from the stop sign cameras.
Alright, thank you, sir. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Councilman Fareed?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I mean, I think I've never heard of stop sign cameras, and I think it's a fabulous idea. I do think we need to keep in mind, and, and perhaps this is something that we need to discuss with our attorney, the fact that these roads are still private roads. Um, in fact, I had a conversation today, um, with the county about that. Um, to understand what would be the implications if the city and the HOA were to just proceed as though the streets were ours, so that we could take the measures that we've been discussing. Um, and I was informed that we would be doing that at our risk, and that we should really consult an attorney before doing so, because while, um, D R, D R Horton is, um, somewhere in the wind right now, they could turn, you know, come back and say that these streets are private, it's their streets, we don't have the authority to do that. Um, particularly if we're getting into a situation where we're trying to enforce things that may, that may be a deterrent for people, um, even complying, because we actually don't have jurisdiction. to enforce something.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Um, that's a good point. Uh, the District of Columbia has, um, has several stop sign cameras. Um, so it's an interesting idea. All right, um, we can contact our attorney, uh, and proceed accordingly. That is the last topic of discussion. Uh, Vice President Ferguson, did I miss anything?
No.
Okay, um. Councilwoman Fareed, is that a new hand?
Yes.
Okay.
Since that was the last topic and I've started talking about it, I just wanted to update the council and the residents. Um, today I was pulled into a meeting three minutes before it started with the county. So there was no time to let everyone know, um, and I wasn't exactly sure it was gonna be on the agenda, but we talked about um, the traffic mitigation measures that have been previously proposed. Um, the conversation was with DPW, um, the Department of Public Works from the county. Um, they have taken our suggestions under advisement. Um, I'm not going to say they are committed to them, but the feedback was that, uh, the proposals are reasonable. And so now they're going to the traffic engineers to assess the, the safety concerns, like for example, where we're suggesting that um, both the right lane and the middle lane be allowed to make a right on red. So they want to do a safety assessment to determine if that's, um, appropriate. What I continued to emphasize in, in that conversation was that we can't just look at our current traffic patterns. We have to be proactive for the fact that there's a new community coming and that there is gonna be a significant, um, increase in traffic in, in that area in particular because of the new development. So, um, I'm hopeful for what is to come. Um, and the next steps, like I said, are, um, they will look, have their engineers look at our proposals and, um, and get back to us.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed, and thank you for your, uh, diligence and persistence in making sure that, um, these mitigation efforts are heard and, um, and that, you know, we're looking out for the best interests of the city of Glen Arden. And I encourage our, uh, citizens to, uh, just follow the work that's going on here. Uh, and continue to make your voices heard. So appreciate you, Councilwoman Fareed. Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate you also, uh, Councilwoman Fareed, for your diligence in this, uh, traffic mitigation study. Uh, Council President, um, before we, uh, I don't know where we're going after this, but before we do that, um, is it possible you could look at the calendar and look at a date to give the treasurer so we can get this, uh, budget on the road? Get the, so they can, uh, do this, uh, fourteen days and I thought it was already advertised, but it seems like after, you weren't here, but the conversation is like it has not been advertised. And we, I guess, I think they need a date to, um, where the council will do the, the, uh, the budget hearing, the public hearing for the budget. If they, uh, they, the treasurer said that he could get everything together, I guess, immediately, probably tomorrow, the next day. And then it'll go to the newspaper and then we can go fourteen days beyond that or maybe twenty days beyond that to set a date for the public hearing so he can publish that in the newspaper also? If I'm not mistaken, I think it's supposed to be published.
Okay, so, um, if we can do it tomorrow, can we?
I wonder how long it would take to get into the newspaper?
Yeah, I don't think it'll get into Thursday. Uh, yes, Council Clerk.
We get it in by noon on Monday, it'll be on next Thursday's publication.
So that means it'll be on thirteenth, two weeks out from there, it's the twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. Uh, is everyone good with the twenty-seventh?
What day is that?
That's a Thursday. So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Fourteen, I mean, we can have it on a, it has to be advertised for fourteen days or on the fourteenth day can we have the public hearing?
For fourteen days.
All right, so let's just stick with the twenty-seventh. Anybody not available the twenty-seventh at? Seven.
Um, do we have a time yet, Council President? I know that's the day after MML. So as long as I know.
Can we do seven thirty?
I'm fine with that.
Council President, I, I am not available that date, um, but I'm happy to review in advance as I've done before and provide, um, comments.
Okay, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, that, the, on that day also, the mayor needs to present the budget and answer questions from the citizens. So you gotta make sure her availability is also there.
Mayor Cross, are you available on the twenty-seventh at seven thirty? Mayor Cross, are you there?
Yes, I am available. Thank you, Councilman Herring, for making the statement.
All right, twenty-seventh, uh, Vice President Ferguson?
Is this in person or virtual?
Uh, this should be in.
Person, it's a public hearing.
Yeah. Combination of both. I'm pretty sure some people are showing online. All right. Council Clerk, was that it?
Um, yes, just one thing that happened before you came on board and that was that council, um, agreed to go into executive session to discuss the, uh, legislation with regard to, uh, no confidence.
Yes, so we have, that's on the schedule, go on a closed session, so we can just loop that in. Um, so, uh, pursuant to the Antedote Code of Maryland State Government Articles, Section Ten dash five oh eight A, the council by majority vote may retire to executive or closed session at any time during the meeting. Should the council retire to executive or closed session, the chair will announce the reasons and the report will be issued at a future meeting disclosing the reasons for such closed session. Um, and I am requesting a closed session, which we can also discuss executive items, um, to discuss, uh, a legal matter. Okay. Having that, uh, is, what the fuck? Having that, is there a motion to adjourn to all sessions moved by Councilman Hairston? Second by, uh, Councilman Ben Herring, any discussion? All right, we'll do a vo- a voice vote. Council Clerk?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gill?
Yes.
Um, Councilman.
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
And I'm a yes, thank you. All the citizens on the call, look forward to seeing you at the public hearing next Tuesday. Thank you. Forty-three, this session is now closed.